Good evening and welcome. Thank you for joining us, for those of you at home and the two in the room. Thanks very much. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and funding a quorum, I call this meeting to order. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted on a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, needhamma.gov. The first item on our agenda tonight is the public hearing for a major project site plan special permit number 2014-11, with French press as a petitioner in respect of the property located at 74 Chapel Street to permit 22 outdoor seats, in addition to a pergola to cover the existing seating. With us tonight should be Jay, there he is. Hi Jay.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Hear us?
Yes.
Definitely.
Jay, we seem to have, we hear you, there is a bit of an echo. I'm not sure if that's, do you have a phone up as well as the video or just one?
Just the computer connection.
Okay, that's perfect. Now we're good. No echo. So, I'll state, I guess for the record, that we've received comments from the building commissioner, the fire department.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Again, I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the notice.
Yes, thank you very much. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert,
Aye.
Artie Crocker,
Natasha Spata,
Aye.
Jean McKnight,
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We have dispensed with reading of the notice of the hearing. Thank you very much, Paul. I appreciate that reminder. So, as we start now, this hearing, I'll state for the record that we've received comments from the building commissioner, the fire department, the police department, the engineering department, and the Department of Public Works. In addition to the health department, through an email exchange between all of these departments and the petitioner in our packets, it looks as though the plans were modified to accommodate those comments from the town departments. I also understand that the design review board approved the elements last night at their, at their meeting, and their approval will be uploaded to our packet imminently. Jay, do you want to walk us through your plan?
Absolutely. Let me start to share the screen.
Please, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. What you're looking at is a rendering of not only the current state but also the future state. So what we're asking for, for the, through the planning board, is the addition of this left side area from the door that you currently see today, all the way through to the right side, to add 22 seats on the patio. The previous side was approved in 2018 by the select board and the ABCC as an outdoor dining patio with 10 seats. On this side, we'll be adding 22 seats and this covered pergola, which is made of extruded aluminum, and it will be powder coated in black paint. We will also remove the existing sign on it and put in the letters French press to be mounted directly on the pergola and lit. It will be LED lighting. From a seating perspective, I'll show you the schematic of all the seats currently in our original plan were approved for 28 seats inside, which we're not currently losing, using, but we don't want to forego those. So we are continuing our 28 seats inside, the 10 seats that were previously approved, and we're asking the planning board to approve the 22 seats that you see listed underneath the pergola with the additional table that sits out. We've also shown for illustrative purposes the parklet, which we've ran for the last two years and would like to continue to run and will go in front of the select board for final approval. If you look at the details of the pergola, which I'm quite sure many of you will have a lot of questions on, there, there are two things to which I want to show. One is it's attached to the building by a beam. There are additional footers on, on each post of the front. There will be gutters to direct away, and we will maintain the, the distance on the sidewalk of at least a four-foot clear path so people can walk from one direction to the other. I'll pause and ask if there are any questions.
So I've got a couple of questions. Is, is the pergola entirely set on private property?
It is. The pergola is completely on private property. Based upon the plot plan that we previously submitted to the building department, they have confirmed that the entire structure with additional footage in front will remain on private property.
And there's a four-foot distance between the far edge on the left of that pergola and four feet of the sidewalk, is that right? Before the street and that's public property?
That is correct. It's four feet 11 inches of additional space, so it exceeds the, the minimum requirements.
And then, and then the, the benches in the parklet, that's on public property?
That is in the actual parking, there are three parking spaces that are in front of the building, and that is public street parking.
And so that's why you're going to the select board, because that's where the public parking is?
Yes, that is correct.
The, the public seating would be?
Public seating and pub, and public parking, yes. So this is seasonal. So we would be applying for, only for the parklet would it be seasonal. We're seeking the pergola to be for, for your usage.
I have a clarification.
Yes, please, Alex.
And Jay, correct me if I'm wrong. Four foot 11 inches is the sidewalk to the seats. The five foot 10 inches is to the pergola structure. So I'm clarifying because you meet the ADA in the summer, because you've got that distance to the seats, but DPW wanted five feet in snow events, and you've got that if you move the furniture, because to the actual structure is more than five feet. So I just want to clarify, that's my understanding. I believe that's what this plan shows. I just want to make sure that that's correct. There's a lot of dimensions here to work with, so.
First and foremost, yes, you are correct. And second, this is a summer plan where you see the full utilization of the tables at the exterior of the pergola in the winter to accommodate for snow removal and additional access. These tables would not be there, and you would just have more than the five feet clearance in order to allow for snow removal.
But during the winter, you'd still have some of the outdoor seating? I wasn't sure if I missed that.
Yes, it would be underneath the pergola closer towards the building.
I see. Okay.
Which actually, if you've seen it lately, it would be very similar to the layout that we have right now, where all of the tables and chairs are, are pushed towards the building. And we would also put heaters in in order for, to allow for it to be comfortable during, during those colder times.
And just, just to be clear, the application calls for 28 seats in total. And there are how many seats outdoors?
So just as a clarification, there are 28 seats inside. The application that you're looking at refers to 22 new seats that we would be adding underneath the pergola. There are 10 seats that have been previously approved. And then, as if we look at the benches, there are additional 18 seats. So in total, there would be 78 total seats, both inside and outside per the seating schematic.
That, that's helpful. My last question is, I appreciate your detailed explanation. My last question is, the health department, as you know, has, you know, has a significant number of conditions and requirements. Have you had an opportunity to review and do you agree to all of those?
Yes, and more specifically, we've been operating this patio for the last two years with no violations from the health department, but more importantly, a higher level of scrutiny as it pertains to rodents nesting. And we have, or at least as long as I've been in the town of Needham for 12 years, always done an outside pest control abatement, and that's done on a monthly basis by our pest control company. And, you know, we, we always take care of it. You know, I think that's only half of it. The other part is making sure that it stays clean, that people are going out there monitoring, cleaning up, you know, on a very frequent basis. And that's something that we do already as part of our overall aesthetic.
Is there a floating floor on the street in the parking spaces?
So going forward, my understanding is that we will have to have a ramp for ADA access. We're working with the town in order to secure that through funding as, as part of ARPA. And we, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll have additional information on that, that will adhere to all, you know, basically all the requirements that DPW has set out for a removable floor in a parklet situation.
Because is that where the Department of Health is concerned about rodents nesting is underneath that the, that exterior floor, that temporary floor?
Yes, and that's part of the reason why we haven't put tables there.
Right. Okay. Okay, got it. That's really helpful. I, Paul, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm all set.
Artie, do you have any comments or questions?
Just wanted to confirm a couple things. The pergola, is it, I couldn't tell, is it hanging over public property? Or is it stopping at public property?
The pergola is entirely on private property.
Even the overhang and everything?
Yes, that is correct.
And just on the, the parklet, what is the flooring on that parklet? Is it, are there slots between, is there opening slots, or what is that like?
So it's to be determined by the town and the Department of Public Works based upon the criteria that they're going to set out for parklets. So we're waiting for additional guidance from the economic director, as well as DPW, as they set requirements for what they would like to see for parklet flooring, given the ADA requirements, and it's on the street.
Thanks, Jay.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Artie?
No, good.
Natasha?
Hi, Jay.
Hi, Lauren.
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
There is the property line with, regarding the sidewalk, because I'm looking at the plot plan and, and I don't see the property line. Is it?
Property line, if you're looking at the, at the plot plan that was taken care of, is actually 10 feet from the building. So at its, at its longest part, it's technically 10.1 inches. At its shortest part, which is where you see that telephone pole, it's 10 feet. So the pergola would stick out six feet eight inches from the building, and then there would be additional space to the property line. It's also important to note that even though the property line stops at 10 feet, there's an additional two feet of additional space beyond the property line before you get to the edge of it.
So, so I just have two questions after that. One is, if you could go back to the, or three actually, to the plan really quickly. Is there any reason why the previously approved seating area and the pergola, that you don't pull the pergola out a little more so that they're aligned?
So the, the reason why you have this temporary barrier here is, one, it is considered to be a semi-permanent structure, which therefore means that we can go the full distance based upon setbacks based on, from the building commissioner. Because a pergola is deemed a permanent structure, it has to adhere to a different setback rules, which limits us to just six feet eight inches. So it will never align because this is a permanent structure and this is a semi-permanent structure.
Okay. That makes sense. Okay. So that was, the question was because those tables that are next to the sidewalk, I mean, if you only need four feet because you're only using it in the, you know, that they're, they're kind of half in and out from the pergola. So that's why I was wondering if you could pull it out, but it sounds like you can't.
So the tables fall underneath a different requirement in which they are semi-permanent, so they can come out as far as we need them to. It's just no physical structure can come out further than the six feet eight inches that we've been provided by the town building commissioner.
And then you had a drawing that I didn't see in our packet, which is kind of showed the elevation of it.
Sorry, this is a new drawing that just recently came in. I can send this over to you, but if you want to look at the elevation, this also.
What is that, the, what the, is that a screen or what?
So yes, this is a sunscreen because of the time of day where the sun sets in order for it to be comfortable or for people to be sitting on the, on the patio underneath the pergola and not be blinded by the sun. We have a full-length screen that we seek to install because we won't have the ability to put umbrellas underneath.
So is, is it movable? Like, can you, can it go up and down?
Yes, it's motorized.
Motorized, okay. And then my, my third, the last question is the columns, are the, you said that the pergola is all aluminum. Is that, are the columns aluminum or are they steel?
They are extruded aluminum columns.
So my, my only comment there is that when they hit the ground level, they shouldn't have something so that like the plow or that, that they don't get salt on them and they start corroding. So you, you might want to think about bringing up the foundation a little bit or, or have something down there that doesn't. Or you're gonna have, you know, it's gonna corrode or someone's gonna hit it.
So we intend to block the columns to prevent salt and other items from coming in. We've been, we've been asked by the building commissioner to make the footings slightly below grade so that if they ever need to replace the sidewalk, that it would look the same and not look choppy around the actual pillars. So we expect to put some sort of covering around the bottom of the, of the pergola in order to prevent corrosion or any other damage. And there will be planners in front because we do have a beer and wine license in order to prevent people from bumping into it.
Okay. That, those are my only questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very clever. Thank you, Natasha. Hi, Jean?
Yes, I am having trouble with the, the distances shown on the plans. We've got the, I guess, the property plan, the one that says the town of Needham messages is building inspection department, and then we've got the seating plan. And what I don't see is precisely where the public way, and I assume the sidewalk is within the layout of the public way. Where does the public way end and the private property begins? I do not see that line clearly marked either on either plan. And and so I, I really would want to see a plan that, that shows that, so that it's clear that the four feet of sidewalk remains year-round. And that the seats, nothing encroaches on that four feet. And in the winter, I think you need a separate winter plan that shows how you're going to comply with the requirements of the Department of Public Works. And I really want to see the exact distances shown on, on both plans.
That's what the plot plan is for. I think if you look at the line, this was done by an official land surveyor and certified down below. The property line listed here, where you see this vertical line, is the physical property line at 10 feet from the building. It shows the structure at 6.8, so it is entirely on private property. So private property extends 10 feet from the building, and there is a additional small amount of two feet that is public property. So technically, majority of the sidewalk is private property.
Oh, yes.
That's what you were saying before. Yeah.
Well, I didn't fully understand that. So, and the town presently has no easement for it?
No. When the building, pardon me, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm just surprised at this, at, at that fact. So the area that's within the Jersey Barrier that is, is in the public way, but the 10, 10.1 feet that's shown on one side, on the left side, and the 10 feet that's shown on the right side is the distance from the building to the line of the public way.
That, to the property line, yes.
Which is the public way line?
Right.
Public way line. So the, when the Department of Public Works says four feet has to be kept open for people to walk by, they're talking about four feet on private property.
It is actually from, from the edge of the curb. That's the guidance that we've received. And that's why Alex made the clarification of five feet of physical clearance from the edge of the curb to the actual structure is the clearance. It, it's actually more than five feet, but that's the clearance that is available for clearing the snow.
And in the wintertime, those seats here, Jean, will be removed.
Mm-hmm. Perhaps we can explain that in the conditions of the decision adequately, but I just feel as though the outdoor seating plan should show those facts more clearly, even if they are shown on the survey plan.
So the plans were adjusted. This is the outdoor seating plan. The plan was adjusted per the building department in order to show, show those dimensions.
Perhaps I'm looking at an earlier plan that went out in the packets?
That's something that I was confused about. It didn't seem to me that we had that later plan that Dave Roach looked at and said he was satisfied.
Okay, that would be my fault if that's true, but I will say,
I think that's in the pack.
I will say that only one dimension was added that I requested, which was the dimension from the curb to the seats. The dimension from the curb to the structure was already shown. Dave wanted the curb to the seats to be added.
To show that there it's compliant with?
It's compliant in the summer with, you know, ADA and, and what.
Well, that's the four feet 11 inches.
That's, that, that is the one dimension that is not shown on the plan you have, and I thought that's mine.
All right.
It's not on that plan, it's on.
It is on that plan.
It is, right here.
Okay, then, then I think it's on that one too.
All right.
No, it's not, it's, 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 oh, you're right. It's, it's not. The five feet is. But we don't have, we don't have.
The plans.
Yes.
Showing. And the second one, which is on page 33 of the material.
Yes.
Shows the four feet 11 inches from the curb to the seat, to the table.
Right, that's correct. That's the second one. Yeah.
Okay, good.
The first, because then.
This is the plan that was in the, we have the four feet.
There's the second.
There were two plans in the materials.
I, I somehow.
You didn't print the second plan.
Anyways, it's, it's, it's there. Let's, let's move on.
Because I, I saw that there was a reference to it.
Jay, I have it in the packet right here.
Well, okay.
So it's, so we're resolved then? Do you have other, it's right here.
All right.
And this is page 33 of the packet.
All right, I don't, all right.
No problem.
I should have thought it was exactly the same plan twice and not printed.
No.
Okay.
But other than that, do you have other comments or questions?
You know, as long as it's clear from our conditions that there's going to be the five feet satisfied the, the winter conditions and and whatever number of feet are shown for the summer.
I just find it strange that our sidewalk is on public property.
Yeah, that's the first thing that struck me.
That's the confusing part of it.
Yeah, what struck me is that, you know, what we see is that, however, it is what it is. Paul, do you have other comments?
No. Is that true for the entire length of, of Chapel Street?
I don't know, but we had a lot of conversations with a lot of staff about, about it. They, they could not find an easement, so if one exists, it's really old and they couldn't find it, but yeah, we, I don't know. I don't know how it extends.
Engineering looked for the easement records on this. We found the easement along the Highland Avenue side on the backside of this building, but we didn't find any easement of record along the Chapel Street elevation.
I, I, we, Alex, do we have anyone else from the public? Do we have other attendees?
There are some, but nobody's raising their hand at this moment.
So I'll ask if there's anyone in the room that wants to ask a question or say anything. I'm going to ask you to come to the table and say your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Paul Good.
Thank you.
I'm also Chair of the revitalization trust fund. Jay and, and I and a group of great people all worked together to be able to do the initial designs for parklets and for, and for his initial outdoor seating. And one of the things that, that I, I can say is that Jay has worked very hard to be able to, to make sure that everything complies, that he has cooperated in every possible way to be able to, to make this, because, I mean, he's been sort of a groundbreaker. You know, when we did the first iterations, that we originally had designed a parklet. And we had a secondary demand to be able to have the sidewalk be the, the other option because of the number of feet of private land in front of them, and also because of the significant distance that that sidewalk affords. It's a, it's a very large sidewalk. So it seemed like a perfect place to be able to do the first experiment on, on being able to do this. And with the select board, you know, looked at the, you know, different considerations, and they said, you know, we're not completely comfortable with the parklet idea yet, but we're, we will be okay with the, with being able to do the sidewalk seating. So that's sort of where it started. And then, of course, you know, about, less than two years later, that I guess, because we've gone through some of the iterations of parklets and all this kind of thing, that the town was able to move incredibly quickly to be able to support the restaurants and, and outdoor seating and just a marvelous, so. I think this is just, you know, it's another example of how, you know, Jay is trying to be able to actually accommodate the significant amount of business that he has. And, and that it's, you know, very valuable for him to be able, since he can't exactly, you know, he can't have a 100-seat restaurant. But through, you know, some of these different things, and, and people have been quite accommodating to be able to sit outside if it's not raining, even in the snow, but you know, basically they'll sit outside if they, they can. So I think it's a really great opportunity to be able to expand this way, and I think the public is going to be delighted about this.
Thank you very much. I would, you know, I, it's clear that, you know, Jay, your operation is an amenity to the town. And, you know, we appreciate the significant investment you've made in both of your spaces. And I always enjoy seeing you there. Do my comments, have any other, my colleagues, any other comments?
Just a quickie if I may, on the survey plan, the Charleston plan shows a drive-through, a driveway, I guess, from Chapel Street to Highland Avenue. But that driveway is not being used in any way in connection with this use, is that correct?
Not part of our property. The, the driveway that you're looking at is, it, it, there, there's going to be two ways. One is an alleyway that's used for trash on one side, on the left side of the building. On the right side of the building is going to be for Bank of America for their ATM. So that's not, that, that's not contiguous to our property.
Very good.
Yeah, the drive-through is part of town hall.
Oh, that's the town hall drive-through. Oh, okay. The way the, the way the lot's shown here.
I know, it looks like the property line. It looks like the property line is to the left of the drive.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
One more thing to add.
Please, Alex.
Just to be also clear, you're approving tonight the outdoor seating on private property, which is your jurisdiction. And then also you're approving a parking waiver for outdoor seating that goes above 30% of the seating that's approved for inside. So the seating that's approved for inside is 28. 30% is, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but. Thirty percent is, well, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but basically, he's requesting more than thirty percent, which is why you're, he's requesting a special permit for that waiver as well. And I wanted to explain that, A, because you're, um, that's part of the relief he's requesting, but also B, because that's one of the reasons that the seating in the parklet is shown on the plan, even though it's not your jurisdiction. We've asked him to show that so that he can get the waiver for the full end result that is his goal in hopes that he can get that approval from, for the, from the select board, so that he doesn't have to come back for an additional parking waiver.
Yeah.
So we asked him to show everything so that you get the context of the full picture and that, so that he can ask for the full parking waiver and have it all wrapped into one hearing.
Understood.
Well, is that in the application, the request for the parking waiver? Because I don't, I'm reading that.
Yes, well, it's in the legal notice and it's in the application by way of amending the original application. That's why there's two applications. Otherwise, it would have just been an application for um, the outdoor seating under section six point nine of the zoning.
Mm hmm.
But the um, because he's asking for an additional parking waiver, he had to amend his original decision, and that's why there is the two different applications. And this is the same way we did it for um, Farmhouse and Hearth Pizzeria and some of the other ones we've done.
Alex, originally inside the restaurant, there was a lot of seating. And originally when it first opened, but now a lot of that seating's actually not only been removed, but been replaced with other aspects of the serving, the serving aspect. So is that, is that actually reducing the inside seating with?
No, we actually also gave Jay some guidance about that, even though he did change, and of course Jay can speak to this as well, but he did change some of the um, configuration inside due to COVID and um, having like a takeout area um, established for that. But because he was originally granted the twenty-eight seats, um, there didn't seem to be any reason why that should be taken away at this point. So we um, said that he should sort of request that that permission remain, because why take it away? Because um, the configuration might warrant changing down the line when he's not doing so much of the takeout that COVID kind of got him into. If that makes sense.
That makes sense.
So with this, uh, Lee, are we outstanding on anything else in order to close the hearing?
No, I think we're fine. I just want to add one other, other item. I think that the, the, the decision that we're going to prepare for you to consider next, at your next meeting, um, we're also going to wrap in the seating that was approved by the select board. Technically, that was your jurisdiction. I, I don't think they realized that that was on private property at the time they authorized the permits for it. So we're just going to clean it up. Um, and so the permit that you're going to issue next week is going to speak to both the seating that they approved um, earlier, um, as well as the seating that's being proposed under the pergola structure.
Are we also approving um, the construction of the pergola and the addition of the electric heating and the new lighting? Is, is it, is that part of our amendment also?
Yes, you're approving the pergola structure. I mean, that's, that, yes, you are.
And are we going, are we going to have some sort of a calculation as to what in fact we, the, the number of parking spaces that will be required and therefore that we're waiving?
Yes, that will be detailed in the decision, what the parking requirement is for the use based upon this, the seating configuration, and I think one takeout station, and then the extent of the waiver that's required.
Okay. Because I don't see that as part of the package, but I guess you, that'll be fine.
Uh, can I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
So we have a motion by Paul to close the hearing, seconded by Artie Crocker. Any discussion? Hearing now will come to the vote. Uh, Paul Albert.
Hi.
Artie Crocker.
Hi.
Natasha Spada.
Hi.
Uh, Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Chair votes aye, aye. Jay, best of luck, man. Thank you very much. And uh, we'll look forward to the decision uh, shortly.
Thank you so much. I appreciate everyone's time. Have a great evening.
You too. Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Thank you. Good to see you.
The second item on our agenda uh, is for the public hearing for major project site plan special permit number two thousand and two dash zero two with Si Restaurant Inc., known as Marcela Art, as petitioner um, in respect of the property located at nine ninety-nine Great Plain Avenue uh, to permit forty-four outdoor seats. Um, uh, with us tonight is uh, Vinod Kapoor, who, are you the landlord or the tenant or both?
Both.
There you go, two, a twofer, as we say in Canada. Um, uh, and uh, I'll introduce you uh, in a moment um, uh, and ask you to, to speak on uh, your application. For the record, we have received comments from the fire department, the uh, health department, uh, the engineering department, all the departments are, you know, are fine with uh, this move for outdoor seating, this application. And we've received today a note from the design review board that they approved the project last night.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we waive the reading of the notice.
Very good, Paul. Thank you very much.
Sorry to interrupt.
I, 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 uh, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing now will come to the vote. Uh, Paul Albert.
Hi.
Artie Crocker.
Natasha Spada.
Jean McKnight.
Hi.
The chair votes aye. We have dispensed with reading uh, the notice of the uh, uh, notice of hearing. So with that, tonight, we have uh, the owner uh, of the restaurant from.
Before.
Very good, Vinod. Thank you very much for being with us.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Very good.
Oh, yeah. I'm in the business uh, for almost forty-two years now. I was in Harvard Square, everywhere in Back Way. So I chose Needham, and I've been here since two thousand and three. So this COVID has given, given the opportunity that we had that parking spaces that we can use for patio. So we would like to use that, but I didn't invest much of the money for the past three years thinking that when the permanent thing comes. Last year, we put the artificial dirt there. And to, and uh, we have, we are going to put the lights, floodlights, so that people read the menu, uh, menus, and uh, then uh, the, the umbrellas, umbrellas, tables and everything. So we invested part of it last year. But this year, we are going to do better. We're going to do the planters on the side and the walls on the side. Of course, with the town uh, does not allow the dirt. The health department does not allow the dirt to be put in the planters. So we have those uh, little stones there and artificial, very beautiful plants we put last year. So we are going to do all that.
Very good.
Yeah. And the barricade, you have seen.
Yes.
Yeah.
In our packet.
Yeah. You have seen that barricade that uh, shows that they are done by the, the artists from Western, and they have done the interior also the same way.
So, how many seats did you have before this application outside? Last year, how many seats did you have?
He had forty-four, but we were like, uh, with the help situation. We didn't use that much of patio, because people. You see, the problem is that if you go to Newbury Street, you see that when the outside is full, inside is empty. So it's, it's not that much of a money-making thing, but it's a thing right now. People want to sit outside. We have the heaters, we have everything.
Very good. Do you have anything else? Uh, your presentation?
No, I can't prepare for the speech, but I don't know.
You're welcome to it.
Thank you. No, that's all my little history.
Okay, uh, that's very helpful. Um, uh, any board comments? Uh, I, uh, my first comment, I just have one. Uh, um, have you seen and will you accept the conditions from the Department of Health?
Yes.
Okay.
Jara, Jara, we're saying.
Yes, exactly right. You are, exactly. Uh, beyond that, uh, Artie, do you have any comments or questions?
Um, just that I've always enjoyed your restaurant, and my younger daughter Christine enjoyed when she was a bartender there, many, many moons ago.
Oh, yeah.
Christine, Christina is there. And so you have a very nice place.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Natasha, do you have any comments?
No, I don't want any comments. Thank you.
Jean, do you have any comments?
Um, just so that I understand what's being asked for, requesting an amendment to add forty-four outs- outdoor seats on existing parking spaces residing on lot. Um, and um, and they're shown. Uh, and uh, but what I, I guess what I don't understand is um, I think I've already eaten in your outdoor area.
Right, thank you.
You have those spaces.
Thank, yeah, we do.
Yeah, but it was a temporary.
Yeah.
It was a handy bowl permit.
Oh, yes, now I understand.
And then when we last, and then I think last year, we passed at a town meeting passed our permanent outdoor seating bylaw. So that's what, that's what brings you here tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's no real change in what was proved before.
Except that it'll be all uh, decorated and
Yes.
welcoming.
We appreciate the greater investment.
Thank you.
Paul, do you have any comments?
I just, just want to comment that uh, I did, my wife and I did have wonderful meal at the outdoor seating last, last, maybe late summer, early fall. Uh, it's, it's a very conducive outdoor area.
Yeah.
Very nice. Um, and, and uh, we appreciate it. So are you going for a year-round seating here, or is it just going to be seasonal?
With this, it's seasonal.
Yeah. Seasonal.
Yeah.
Good.
Good. Uh, Lee, do we have anything else that's standing on this file?
Uh, no, uh, we can prepare a draft decision for your consideration at the next meeting.
Very good. So uh, with that, can I just have a motion to close the hearing?
Is there any? I guess, I guess I'm assuming there's nobody in the audience that wants to talk. I can't see.
You know, uh, like, can we check, uh?
Paul wanted.
Well, I recognize Paul in a moment, but we'll see you check first. Thanks, Lee. Now, uh, Paul, did you want to? Paul did, sorry to get interrupted. Do you want to come and, and speak for a minute?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
Yeah, mostly just to be able to say that I think that, that, you know, again, this is the continuation of something that I think has been a fantastic trend for you know, the business all throughout downtown. Um, and every, every additional space, especially, you know, we can have, you know, the level of quality of food uh, that you bring to the town all the time. Um, and being able to enjoy that in outside spaces, uh, just makes Needham a, a much better place to be able to, to live and work, I guess. It's a sexy, that's the phrase of the town, but I think it, it's really true that, you know, Vinod has been, um, I've, one of them started uh, his restaurant and, and has always tried to be able to keep a very high standard of quality and, and service. And these restaurants, uh, restaurants always will maintain. So I think this is a great expansion and a great accessory to this, uh, to, to not only to his restaurant, but also to people down.
Thank you very much, Paul. All right. Do we have any other comments? Doesn't look like it online.
Exactly. Before we officially close, it's slightly off topic. The only question I know is the front, the awning in the front of the house, in front of the building on Great Plain House. Any plans for that?
Yeah. Yesterday, we had a meeting, uh, and uh, we are going to get rid of that awning front and back. And we are going to change the sign like Harry's, the black sign with the gold leafy, your gold. So uh, uh, we are going to have another hearing because they, I wanted to have uh, Indian restaurant, Masala Art. Right now, we just have Masala Art. Uh, because we have Masala Art, a lot of people think that it's an art store. So I had to write that Indian restaurant. So now they question that you cannot write bar and lounge. I said, that is a message I want to give it to the people. So we are debating that and disputing that. Hopefully by fourteenth of this month, we'll be all settled. I mean, the sign itself is almost close to twenty-two thousand. So that's why, what the delay was, that to, you shell out twenty-two thousand at one time for a small business was difficult. And now we have read that.
So the awnings, they're coming completely down. No replacement, just completely down front and back.
Front and back. Yeah, it'll be, and beautiful goose like, uh, nightlights and the floodlights in the back so that people can read the menu. Listen.
And Mr. Shirk, could I say something about what you bring to our town? Um, my husband and I follow vegetarian lifestyle and uh, ha- have wonderful vegetarian offerings on your menu. Um, and it's, it's a great benefit to the town and to those who follow that lifestyle within the town.
Yeah.
Also, um, I worked for many years with a woman uh, who came to this country from India. And she lives in Boston, where she drives out to meet him. She says it's the best Indian restaurant in the whole area.
We will say that. Let me tell you a little background. I take the credit, but my wife came to this country in seventy-one. I came in seventy-eight when we got married, arranged marriage. So she designs all the recipes. Since seventy-one, she and her sister opened the first Indian restaurant in, in uh, uh, Cambridge. So we have a history, but she doesn't like to tell me and tell people that because people start calculating her age. She's not here today. She'll forgive me.
Very good, understood. Uh, very good. Uh, can I have a motion to close the hearing?
Some rules.
Second.
We have a motion by Paul Albert, a second by Artie Crocker to close the hearing. Any discussion? Hearing now will come to the vote. Uh, Paul Albert.
Hi.
Artie Crocker.
Hi.
Uh, Natasha Spada.
Hi.
Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Best of luck. This hearing is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been teaching this for the past three years, where after COVID, that don't shake hands.
Oh, yes, exactly. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very kindly.
Alex, was there a parking waiver coming with this one, or was that already?
That was, but I think it was mentioned that he's amending the decision as, as well. Yep, I, I think that was kind of covered, but yeah, and it's a little less tricky since we don't have the parklet situation and everything, but yes, he's doing that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh,
Okay.
The third item on our agenda is uh, an appointment with the uh, Needham Housing Authority to discuss uh, the phase of, the current phase and the stages ahead of us with uh, the Linden Chambers redevelopment project. Uh, with us tonight, we'd like to welcome you guys to the, uh, you folks to the, join us at the table here. Uh, Dan Chen, principal in charge, uh, Margaret Moran, uh, uh, deputy executive director of development for uh, the Cambridge Housing Authority. Uh, Steve Merritt, the interim executive director, uh, for the Needham Housing Director, Red Foster, chair of the uh, Needham um, uh, Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. And I think remotely, Lee, we may have Natalie Jensen and Cheryl Cosman.
I do not see them. Am I missing something?
Maybe not.
Okay.
May not be. That's fine. I.
So we're all the presenters.
Yes, okay.
And, and I'll just start it. I mean, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, I think we all know that for a long time, the redevelopment of the Linden Chambers property has been on top, uh, kind of priority list. And um, we kicked off the A and E Designer Services team and project last month. We wanted to come for you and introduce BH plus A and Dan Chen, who's our principal in charge of the team. I think you know the other people at the table, and so I'd like to just turn it over to Dan and Alex. If we can bring the slide up.
Yeah, could you introduce the other people at the table though for our?
Oh, I, you just did.
I guess.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Great. And Dan, take it from here.
Okay. So, uh, good evening, um, member, member of the board. Uh, my name's Dan Chen. I'm a architect, I'm the principal of the firm Barton Andrew Architect, BH plus A. We're a forty-five-person architecture practice in, in Seaport, Boston. Uh, we specialize, one of our, one of our specialties in elderly and affordable housing. Um, working with many of the local housing authorities. Our clients are uh, Mefor Housing Authority, Cambridge Housing Authority. Uh, we have several projects with Boston Housing Authority, so. So it's, it's an honor to actually work with, with Needham Housing uh, Authority on this project. Um, we're, we're, uh, many, many of our projects are, are elderly and disabled um, properties and that. And so here, you, you see some of our sort of last five years, uh, Cambridge Housing Authority, the one in the middle is, is burned, Daniel Burns. Uh, two hundred and ninety-eight units that is over uh, two and a half year base uh, project is. So one of the things we, we know is that many of these projects takes a while. Uh, I mean, several, several years. So, so we're in a, we're in it for the long haul. And so um, if you go to the next slide, we, we actually have a forty-five person, we do, we do have a recreation practice. Um if you go to the next slide, we we actually have a forty five person, we do, we do have a recreation practice as well. So here in Needham. We completed the the Needham Center of Heights in twenty thirteen. Um the Rosemary Pool in twenty eighteen. And um currently working on Emery Grover for the converting that building into the school board administration office. Was the the Hillside School um sort of conversion. That's just recently completed. So we're we're ours. Sort of familiar with the the Needham process. And so. And and very excited to be working on the uh was Needham Housing Authority. Moving then to the existing conditions, I know that the board are, this is a a project is a long history. So um I I will. Very quickly sort of. Describe sort of the London London Chambers. Site is hundred and fifty two studio units. These are. Pretty tiny, four hundred square feet, studio units for uh elderly and disabled uh community at the moment. Uh it's four hundred square feet in Lindens, which is what you see in orange. There's uh ten buildings. There was. Uh there's four, sorry, eighteen buildings. There was four. Um units each, so there's a total of seventy two studio units. The one that you see in brown are the chamber site. There's sixteen buildings in each two level building. And for a total of eighty units. And all both of these, all hundred fifty two are studio units at at the present. So um. And so our our goal for this project really is to uh to. To redevelop, to to study the opportunities and some of the challenges. Uh to redevelop this this project or this parcel and to be able to one house more. Um more housing, more affordable housing in this case, also uh the size in that they're one bedrooms instead of uh studios. And so if you can go to the next slide. Um existing condition, these these uh hundred fifty two. Units were built between fifty nine, sixty two, and and they're really not in great shape. One, they're the wood frames are they're brick on the outside. Um there's no insulation. And and many of them were. Or elderly and disabled development, they uh the two story chambers building do not have elevators. So those are real sort of accessible. Challenges that that will need to be addressed. Um the uh the the unit themselves are undersized, D H C D standard size today for uh one bedrooms are six hundred and fifty square feet. And so because of these deficiencies and but we also see some of these as challenges and opportunities and how. What can we do to sort of address some of these shortfalls? You can go to the the next slide. So the current project uh status is that we've been hired in December of this uh last year. We had a kickoff was uh was the team, we had a uh meeting kickoff meeting with the Linden Chamber residents. Uh last month. And so and and all of this is done to solicit feedback and really to and also introduce similarly to to the team. Uh the team to the residents and sort of get their. Um get their own sort of feedback and and we have. Uh subsequently completed uh a resident survey as well. So all hundred fifty two studios were. Um send out a six page survey to sort of understand their current conditions, some of their. Uh some of their sort of, like again, just their their feedback. Where we are today is that we are in investigation and conceptual phase. What that means is that we are. Data collecting, we're uh studying, uh collecting the the investigations of. Hazmats of the the wetlands and and again, really understanding the constraints of the site. And and to see what can we, what can we do here? Um the. All of this study um is really pushing also towards understanding of. Um at the path of of zoning and as in the type of the development, the the density. Uh the the character, the height and and so on, and as well as parking. So many, many of these. Um investigation data collecting are all trying to to sort of. Uh push finally into a into a comprehensive sort of plan, if you're, if you will, master plan for for this site. Um we then uh. Together with that, we are. Very aware of the the outreach. And so that's why we're here today um for it's a very long process. And as as well, I will share the schedule very shortly. And that um it it's really outreach into the neighbors and make particularly make for street neighborhoods, there's um. High rock, middle school across and so um and and as well as the conservation since there is wetland. On the site and so on. So they they are many of these agencies that we are sort of. Doing the outreach uh at at this time as well, doing the schematic design face. Um next slide. Our our project goes really um trying to to replace and redevelop this this piece, this parcel. Into more more units and into more sort of open, providing better open space and and maintaining the community here. But adding units and and the the not the density that we're looking at that, you know, some of the preliminary studies are anywhere between. Eighty five hundred, under fifty units, which is uh which means it's anywhere between two hundred fifty to three hundred units. All of this is to re- really is to be sort of flushed out, if you will, during the next um two to three months. And in that, we are really trying to determine. Um the the number of the the units that the site can support that is in line with the character. And the scale and with the surrounding neighborhood. So um so all of that is 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 really. Sort of pushing this this project in that in that. Uh with that in mind. One, the 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 other uh the other option or the other uh thing together with this is to um to. To, as I said, it's really to produce a design that that fits into the neighborhood. And I think that that. I I I want to, if anything tonight, I want to make sure we I I leave that uh as a, as sort of as a. Uh a message. And um and also knowing that the the redevelopment will have a phased approach as in um. Since we have a hundred and fifty two units here and and they are, they are certain the. The the current configuration of the units lends themselves to a certain way of of development. A first phase, a second phase, and and how do you, how do you sort of uh accommodate the current residents? All of those are in. The current sort of in in our study plan. The the, can I, I move to the next slide. Um energy is really another uh really important element of this redevelopment and and that's also a an important impetus for that. For this development. The current building really have no insulation, uh really it's not energy efficient, the HVAC systems are outdated. They're um sort of uh out of its useful life. And so one of our tenants here is to. Reduce the energy footprint of the building, not necessarily, and and then you offset that. Was renewable or uh whether it's ground source heat pumps, whether it's reg credits, whether it's TV panels. But the the first hand role is to take a look at how do you reduce the energy footprint of of this this new development? And and that is done through minimize or maximizing building building efficiency. In this case. Approaching passive health standards with air infiltrations, with insulations and so on. And. The other goes to minimize the carbon footprint of the building. And how do we do that is through eliminating fossil fuels. At this development and which of of which is all electrification uh to to the building. In that, uh whether it's using air source heat pumps, whether it's using ground source heat pumps, whether it's using. Um electric cooks uh ranges and so on. So the goal really is to eliminate gas. Um access or gas to this site. Um and then the building commission is the post occupancy, which we verify and confirm that we are achieving what we said. Establishing that energy use intensity, for example, having set that clear goal. Um and and lastly. A- as you know, this topic, sustainability, resiliency is a very. Uh it it's been supported at various levels between whether it's the. The IRA, the the Inflation Reduction Act, because the uh funding, the D O E R, as well as the. New Energy Code that is coming in in July uh in in the state Massachusetts. So all of this really placed into. Um the the under the umbrella of sustainability that we're we're hoping to achieve with this redevelopment. Um if I can go to that next uh slide, but the last two slides I just wanted to touch on is the project schedule. So for. Where we are, uh we're we're in uh that or March now. So we're we're at the, for the next six months, we really are in the concept. And the schematic face of the project. And this is where we're trying to back. Backfinding, investigation, as well as exploring building options, the density question, the form, the shape, the style, the character. Of the development. And this is really for the next. Six months. That's sort of where we we're heading. And then if you can sort of go to the last slide. This gives you an overview of the entire project schedule where uh we. We're um hoping that at the end of this year, we start with the construction documents and then. In the quarter four of twenty twenty four, uh that's where we start the construction for the first phase of the project. And so that this sort of ties back to to my initial uh comment is that. A project this type typically i- is a very long um process that so we we are sort of working. We're aware of of this timeframe and and so. Um reaching out to to the planning board, we just came from the select board. It is really trying to to get that process sort of started and and this ties into that that outreach. So so we wanted to. In a way, uh not not broadcast by advertising, so I really try to get the community involved in this process.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
No, we're here to let you know it's started. Uh get any preliminary input. Um questions that you might have and. We'll be back.
Got a a few questions and then I'll ask my colleagues uh for any comments they have as well. Right now, this uh zoning district is um. The general residence, right? Which allows for what density?
Uh I I believe it's uh the, there is not a specific F A R. I think there are actually two. Lindens is on one. But both of which are are single family residence zone. Uh one is S R B, the other is general residence. And in I believe in terms of density, uh it's. I mean, currently we have hundred and fifty two. So. That's existing nonconformity.
Right, right. And then and then you're looking at potentially. Adding a hundred or a hundred and fifty additional units. So we'd be doubling the nonconformity. Uh but you're looking to do that by bringing it all into performance through a zoning change potentially, is that right?
Uh zoning, there are two paths, I believe, that in the uh in Needham, where it's either a uh a comprehensive permit. Or a.
And is that the product that. Road that you would anticipate to go down? Is that a passively, is that a path of least resistance for you?
Well, actually, I think that has yet to be determined. So that's part of the investigation phases is really to develop that idea and and sort of firm up the. Understanding of the number of units and then sort of then see what that path. Makes most sense.
How do you determine the number of units?
In terms of height, in terms of setbacks, in terms of, because they are also wetlands, they're. And so we're not putting ten story buildings here and 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 so realistically, how how can the site? Support the number of the units. Those those are something that we are sort of studying. We're we're not here saying three thousand units. Because that's not a possibility. The two hundred fifty, three hundred units, something we initially looked at, that that may be a possibility. And so. We are, we are in that sort of investigation phase.
Are you anticipating demolishing the existing structures?
We we are uh. We are looking to demolish the uh eighteen Linden uh buildings. The five chamber buildings, they may be, there may be options of modernizing them. The issue here also is that one, there are two levels, therefore you are, you you are going to have elevators. The other is that they're also undersized. And so how do you work for enlarged units within an existing building? It is a challenge. Um but that is one of the, one of the study that we will be sort of including in our study.
And uh and then during the construction phase. Whether you're renovating the Chambers site and or demolishing and you're gonna. You know, begs the question, what happens to the residents during that phase?
And and we we were asked this exact question also at at the select board earlier. One, the the building configuration sort of lends itself, the way how, for example, Linden is is organized, the first. Session, if you will, has a building with thirty two units, whereas the remaining larger site. Separated by existing parking lot has ten buildings or and and was forty forty units there. So you may be that the the first phase of thirty two units is is redeveloped into a phase one A, if you will. And then subsequently with phase one B and and so on.
Maybe Mr. Chair, though I could ask, uh Margaret Moran. Uh has done this many times before to address. How we go about doing.
Yeah, so I mean, resident relocation actually came up. Um when we had our resident meeting, I mean, in general, the residents are excited at the prospect of. Um renovation and and expansion of their living space. Um but they too would have concerns, obviously, we all would in terms of what would happen to them during construction. So the obvious first step is to do it in a phased manner. So you're not asking or requiring all seventy two Linden Street or. The combination of all hundred and fifty two to be be gone, because I think that becomes a much harder problem to solve for. Um so you would look at phasing and as Dan said, there's kind of that natural kind of bridge. Where you've got eight buildings on one side of the parking lot. You know, ten on on the other. And so you'd look to see what you might be able to do there. And then you would work um to develop a relocation plan. We've always done written relocation plans with our residents. Where, you know, we kind of write out what the options are, make sure everybody has the same information. And work it then individually with each person, because once she does not fit all. And you know, people have very specific needs. For some folks, they really need to stay in that. Neighborhood for other folks is. Um we mentioned at the select board meeting, you know, they may have options to stay with relatives during a construction period and that that works for them. Others are open to other opportunities. So you work on. Um you're trying to build some vacancies on site, trying to do it in a phased construction, so you don't impact as many people and then work with. Residents through a series of options in terms of, you know, staying on site, potentially moving to other housing authority. Um property, sea beds, main example, other.
How viable is that? Because I know it's it's very competitive to get into.
Well, for 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 the housing authority properties, they would have some some ability to do administrative transfers. And you would try to, you know.
There's capacity in these other municipalities?
No, this is still in Needham. Um you know, it's it it's very hard to get another housing authority to to take on. Um but you would, we would work with um other housing providers in Needham to see what resources they might be able to bring. And then also work at, you know, um with their uh section eight voucher program to um find affordable units. Within Needham, um all the, you know, the housing authority has a, you know. It has a legal obligation and a moral obligation to make certain it does the right job with each individual resident. Um in the uh development budget that we put together will include all of the funding to cover um. Um the expenses for removing relocation connection if we need to. Um provide housing subsidy support for residents to stay in Needham, to cover the difference between what they can afford and. What the rent is, all of those things will be um. Um determined and budgeted for within the development budget, um because construction can't happen if you don't.
I'll jump in here and say this has been on our radar screen, it's a major issue, you know, saying one for years and, you know, thinking deeply about it. Kind of trying to come up with out of the box solutions and uh. And uh you know, I can speak for the board that, you know, we absolutely have to respect. Uh that the units as small as they are, every one of them is a home to somebody. We have two board members here tonight. Um who would concur with that and uh. And we will be working very intensively now with the best. Um minds and thinkers and how to how to get this thing done.
It's an interesting area because you do have the wetlands, like I, you know, we live very close to there and I. Uh well, um. Uh it will walk with our family and our dog all around the neighborhood. It's part of our. It's mixed into the community, which I, I appreciate. Interesting conversations with all kinds of neighbors all across town. And it becomes more inclusive. That way, which I think is part of a societal goal. So um. I um, you know, I know that it's going to be a challenge working through capacity to be able to handle the relocation. That's one issue. It's. Obviously outside of the other jurisdiction of the board. What type of things would you look? For the board, from the board? Over the course of the next eighteen months?
Well, um I'll turn that over to Dan, um but just one unfinished question, I think a few minutes ago, um which I would put back to. Well, um I'll turn that over to Dan, um but just one unfinished question, I think a few minutes ago, um which I would put back to you know, this board, which is uh we sort of see um ourselves in partnership with the planning board and select board and the other boards in town that care about this happening. And um you know, this uh question, you know, of do we do a a friendly forty B O local initiative program, or do we go through town meeting? Are there any views that you could share with us about that? I I will tee it up and say that time is of the essence, you know, every year that goes by that this doesn't get uh have this project doesn't happen is another eight, nine percent increase in construction costs, which are already, you know, very large. You can think of it as two or three million dollars more per year that we have to raise.
And then I'll just jump in. Not only do you have increased costs, but right now, um the state is is flush with um recovery money and uh and Employment Reduction Act money and and other things. And a lot of that is being dedicated to affordable housing. And and so you really want to try to position the the um request for funding through the state process in a timely way to really benefit from kind of the um resource.
When, when can you go to the state to actually start requesting money?
You'd have to have the zoning in place.
So zoning in place, but you don't need construction documents. This is only in place.
You have a schematic design.
Design and zoning, and then you should be working towards your construction documents, but you know, you could be walking, working simultaneously on your construction documents while the state is reviewing the funding application. But key to get getting into the door with the state and getting, you know, a credible application is to be, you know, to have your zoning in place. And so that that will be part of, I think, the calculation by getting input from all of you, I think, is is really critical.
How were these buildings existing now or under the existing zoning? What what's?
They are pre-existing nonconforming uses and how they got that way is lost in the midst of time.
They can stay as is, but if the minute we touch them.
Lee, you were here in nineteen sixty one, weren't you?
I don't think so. Those buildings have been there for quite some time. I was around when we when we uh did the the general residence zoning to enable the two family construction uh in the high rock homes development.
I will say that my I have an inclination to try and look at a bit of a, if we go through a rezoning to more broadly rezone the area. And I think part of that ties into the housing plan working group.
Yeah, that's what I thought Gina and I are probably gonna talk about in a second, is that there are opportunities with the M B T A T M B T A communities, plus what we're looking at with the um housing plan working group is to rezone some of these areas where um we're calling it elder services zoning districts, right? We do have elder services zoning districts, like the Carter Building, but I I wasn't, I don't think we've talked about applying the elder services on just to this side. We we did for the one across from the Muzzy site.
I I think I think they planned that came out of the was looking at using the apartment zoning, I think, overlay, you said eighteen units per acre.
What we're really, yeah, what we're really looking at is the apartment A one.
See whether whether or not the A one district that we currently have uh is sufficient density. Eighteen units an acre.
It's, I think that that's why I'm thinking that we need a broader. Yeah, well, or an overlay or
Yeah.
Uh but I think that there is an opportunity, there are, there are there are benefits and drawbacks to the site. There are limitations, you know, to the site, because on the one hand, you've got many acres. But they're not really because of the wetlands and which is a benefit. But they're not, I wish that we could find a way where we could unlock more area. Um you know, for future capacity and so on, but we're but we're limited.
We've got other Needham Housing Authority sites in town.
Yes.
And so what's crossing my mind is if we create a new zone, redefine a zone in order to do this, is this something that we really want to not just focus in on this one area, which 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 is kind of, yeah, aren't I playing now? It's something that we want to work at, we zone in all the areas in town where we have Needham Housing Authority.
Yeah, we do, we have uh, we have forty three acres that we own in Needham amazingly. Um that's a lot of land. Uh but twenty five of those acres are adjacent to London and Chambers Street, and that's the high rock estates. You know, sixty bungalows and uh that is, we can't get to redeveloping that or figuring out what to do it for another three or four years. So we can't take a comprehensive.
Why is?
And because the size of the authority, we can only do maximum two projects at the same time. And without uh blowing up here, uh something will break.
Yeah.
But do you have a master plan?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And and so the the issue um is timing in terms of your comment, Paul. Um the other issue is um that and and I I invite your comments on this. Now, we're all all aware that there's a lot of other complicated joint zoning changes in the works.
Yes.
In the next year and a half. Um and um and you know, how many of these movie, major moving parts can go at the same time?
Well, that's why I'm I'm thinking of it the other way. How often do we go to town meeting? To ask for another zoning change and another zoning change and another zoning change. And going to town meeting and saying we're creating this Needham Housing Authority District.
But we don't know what we need to do in the twenty five acres of uh of the adjacent site. And we we, there's no way we can take that on if if you know, and the, you know, the the other question is again, this, you know, ticking clock of the construction costs. We have a a clear view and in terms of raising the money for phase one of the reconstruction and 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 this is something that the Cambridge Housing Authority, Margaret, the the effort of putting together what we call the financial layer cake, which is a bunch of different sources that are knit together in order to be able to get a phase one. But as already raised, is, you know, the point, you've got to have your schematic design done and you have to have your zoning in place. Or you can't even get in the door to the layer cake of.
I think it would be helpful for us uh to, you know, to get a timeline, more precise timeline, if when you would need, you know, a zoning change and to what end. And, you know, and and I'd like to know what you see as the risks and the benefits. As you've mentioned, Reg, two approaches to this. You know, what do you see as, you know, as the risk and what do you see as the opportunities in going down, you know, the left path or the right path?
I think Margaret can address that. We've been thinking deeply about that.
Yeah, so the so the state typically has one round of funding. Um and it's usually um starts in the fall, um you know, clear pre-application and in late October, early November. Um and the, one of the first questions they asked is your zoning in place and you can nuance that on the pre-application and and say it's in progress. But by the time they invite you for the full application, which is in January, if you don't have it, then they're they they've got plenty of other ones that do, and that just means that they don't invite you for.
Are you looking for fall town meeting this year or do you think this is a twenty twenty?
I I don't think there's time to do the fall town meeting.
Right. Given the work that has to be done.
What what do you mean there is not time to do fall town meeting?
We haven't even done the conceptual design yet.
Yeah, we're not gonna have like a vision or, you know, and we and we have to go through a robust process. Not only internally, but with the residents and then with the neighborhood and with all of you. And and that's gonna take some period of time.
Sounds like you're talking about that stage of going for that application until the fall of twenty twenty four.
If it goes to town meeting, I think there's still potentially be a path forward through the lip process at a friendly forty B.
But you you had a timeline. I saw a timeline up there of construction documents starting at the beginning. We'll say maybe beginning of twenty twenty four.
Yeah. So we're still holding out hope that there's a way for us to.
But but doesn't, but doesn't that mean that if, I mean, you're getting the schematic and you're getting something ready to go for the state for the funding? Um which means that the going for the state for the funding is happening at the beginning of twenty twenty four, isn't it?
It would, you would start the process in the fall of twenty twenty three, yes, and then fall of twenty twenty three, yes. Put the application in in January.
The zoning change.
Just talking about the application to the funding agency, right?
I understand.
But we could change the zoning
Yeah.
in in the fall.
We can change the zoning in the What can we, we can change the zoning in the
Confusing because that was thrown out and Reg said, oh, we won't be ready then.
So I I I think we should ask that as a question, maybe we're uh overachieving tonight here.
I I'd like, I'd like, I see that Lee has her hand up and I'd like to uh recognize Leah, though Lee, you may have frozen. Are you frozen?
I don't think so. I I I just, I guess, Reg, I just wanted a clarification, because you and I did speak briefly about this. And um I had offered to you, you know, that we were gonna, the town's goal was to do the rezoning um that that they're required to do under the M B T A Communities Act in, at this May Town Meeting in twenty twenty four. Um and then what we couldn't get done at that meeting, um use the fall town meeting in twenty twenty four is a is a backstop to make sure we secure compliance. And I understood from you that you thought that you needed to have this zoning really either a regulatory strategy in place uh by the end of twenty twenty three, the waiting into twenty twenty four was too late and that was gonna jeopardize your construction schedule and your ability to access, you know, funds. Um So is that the case, uh which in a sense uh puts you more on a lip path than on a zoning path?
In short, I think, yes.
So what do you need from us to support a lip approach?
I'm not sure we have authority under lip like. Yeah, it's a Z B A.
The answer is the Z B A is the primary um
Right.
Board um and and
And the select.
And the select board, but then it the Z B A process, as I understand it for a comprehensive permit, is that they go around and check with all the other boards um in, you know, as if yeah, and receive comment and give weight to that comment. So it's not like you're excluded from the process. The process just is accomplished in a different way.
Right, but we don't have, we don't have the ultimate authority.
No, but I'm still, but I'm still confused of timeline. It's so, it's sound, it's sound as though you wanted to have something, the actual zoning voted and approved before, or at least by January of twenty twenty four.
Correct. If we're gonna do zoning change, if not, we, if they're gonna ask us to do zoning change rather than going through the lip process. Sounds like they may not be, they may not be ready to have everything in place to get to town meeting for the October.
The process that you did.
Yeah.
Special. And so if you go through look, that that would just be a select board vote at the end of twenty twenty. At the end of twenty twenty three.
Then the select board opens the door. Um and then And then the Z B A is the one that conducts the hearings and grants a comprehensive permit. And I also understand in the lip process, um you have to get, uh also get the approval of D H C D that this is a difficulty with that, but that is part of the process.
So we, if the October town meeting, how much time do we need to hold the hearing? What does that schedule look like? When do we need uh to go, what is our pro- our timeline?
Well, you probably have to have a, you probably have to have the zoning done and ready for hearing at the beginning of September. At the latest, um maybe even August.
That's for, then to hold public hearings when? September.
So I mean, you you need to have the zoning probably done in in, I'm just trying to think off off the top of my head. You need to have the zoning done probably in the end of July, beginning of August, in order to advertise it for hearings at the beginning of September.
So how much time, how much time?
I think, I think, I think the issue is they need to know what it is they want. And what it is, what it is, what what their development, you know, profile looks like, that everybody agrees is this is is a a proposal we we want to advance. And then the zoning could be written to enable it. Um but the first step really.
So you're starting your schematics at the beginning of April, from what I understand.
Uh we're starting, we're we're doing investigations and
Using March to investigate and you've got to really get get going April, April, May, June.
That that's correct.
Till the end of June.
And and the end of June is what the current standard.
So you would you know, the faster you move, the faster we can move, if you wanted to go through us. And I'm prepared to commit the board to working expeditiously, you know, to be able to do that.
You're not gonna be chair in April.
It also sounds like the zoning, the main thing for the zoning in some ways for us is what density do you want? Which means that if we put it, which means that if we put a, let's say, come in with the highest density possible initially, when we start at least our process, we can tamp it down. You know, we can, we can then back down if need be. That way, we can't go back up, we can go down. When we start, you know, after
The hearing date, we have to be as broad as possible, because we can't extend the zone. For greater relief before a town meeting, but we can make it more restricted. Lee, go ahead.
I would say that we have a lot on our plate, um securing compliance under the M B T A, you know, Communities Act. And taking the recommendations in the housing plan and advancing just that agenda. Um and so to the extent that the housing authority can create its um meet its goals and objectives through a a a different path. Um it frees us up to focus on the M B T A Communities Act and rather than diverting our time to try to accomplish both goals.
So climate smart zoning and other zoning initiatives that may come up between now and May. So if, you know, you guys came to us a second ago saying that you think that the uh friendly forty B program is gonna be a more expeditions route. And that's pretty clear and consistent with the process that we have to go through that Lee's outlining, in addition to all of the other stuff that we're gonna be looking to, you know, reform over the course of the next uh six months. Um I'm, you know, but you'd have to, if you still look at that, uh us as an opportunity, then you really have to advance your dates by, you know, by six to eight weeks. You need to tell us
Right.
what the zoning is gonna be in, you know, by June
Yeah.
or into June. If you do that, you know, we'll find, you know, I don't mind a town meeting, there is this you know, chorus from some in town meeting that October is not meant for zoning at town meeting. I think that's a false argument.
I don't think that holds anymore.
I will there.
It wouldn't hold for this situation.
Well, would it hold? Well, I I think if it holds for one, it must hold for all.
Going to town meeting, rezoning changes in October now for the past two or three years. Gonna continue to do that.
I, so I'm, what I'm saying is that.
Do it once a year.
But but this is a very important for the town.
Well, just a little question is who's going to write the zoning? Because Lee and Alex
Will be.
Are very busy.
And if you have, do you have, it's part of your study funding. You know, do you, you know, are you able to work with the municipal attorney to be able to uh draft the zoning that we could then look at and review?
Yeah, and I mean, if that's the direction we 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 end up going, I think, you know, we would.
Right, if, exactly. So you'll have to go through your own internal process. You clearly understand the risks and pitfalls of either scenario. You know, we're here, we can be an ally, we'll do our part. Um and uh whether that range is coming through on a you know, when the Z B A leads the, you know, the process, we're not gonna hold up, we'll do our diligent effort as we always do.
And we'll be looking for your input all throughout, you know, irrespective of which process we go to, because, you know, I think Yeah, I mean, either way, I mean, because I think, you know, what, you know, Reg has been working through the years and and I to build up awareness of the need and the support. And I think our best path, whatever the path we're on, is to continue building that momentum and support and and really take to heart the comments that we get from the various different um town boards, but also from the the larger community and
Question that comes to my mind. Which may. If the answer is what I'm hoping the answer is. Obviates a lot of this. You're pre-existing non-conforming now.
If they.
And you do the expansion. Under the current pre-existing non-conforming.
I believe so.
No, uh I looked into that, we can just diminish our heights. And it's such a big change, it's and we're adding more density, that i- it's not like we're just rebuilding.
Kitchen, you could do kitchen and bathroom improvements without with within existing non-conforming, but the minute you start to. Change the footprint, you're, you know, you're, you've kind of triggered. You you're out of, you you now need to comply with your underlying zoning. And the finance is gonna require, you know, evidence of that, so you can't move forward until you solve.
Before I go to you already and and to Jean, Natasha, you wanted to.
I just have a quick question, so schematic design is ten weeks, but. You know, at the end of May, you probably have a couple of options at that point.
Yes.
And you know, and you know, or midway through, you know what the extreme zoning would need to be and so. Uh you don't have to wait till the end of schematic design, you could kind of figure out worst case scenario mid schematic design is what I'm thinking. And I'm wondering, Jean, and I don't know if this could, and and I guess I I should ask Lee and and Alex. Could this be part of the rezoning that we have to do for the MBTA community, so it becomes part already of something that we're already doing rather than an additional step? I don't know how that works, but is that something that could be?
I think that, I think that's gonna be, uh we're looking to change the zoning. As part of that comprehensive response to MBTA communities for May twenty twenty four, this is October twenty twenty three.
But we have, but we have to vet it with what we're doing.
Yeah, the time, what we said in the housing plan is we are not prepared to make a recommendation on what the zoning should be for the house of the authority sites. Because their planning isn't far enough along, didn't know what density they need, what heights they. And we're still at that stage in the in the process, they think it's it's still not clear exactly what's needed.
But by May, they'll have clarity and that.
By May twenty twenty four.
No. They they will have it so that then we can look at that to to include when we look at the MBTA communities to help with our density. Or increase density, just thinking that it's kind of the.
Yes, we can definitely do that.
Yeah.
Be beneficial to the MBTA communities.
Are you suggesting that because of their timing issues, uh they go for um a friendly forty B? Um and they get it. But at the same time, uh they're they're content to have the parcel rezone. Uh under the uh MBTA communities.
That it's happening concurrently.
Because it would help the town.
You're gonna be phasing anyway.
Absolutely.
So then it would be happening concurrent and it would help the MBTA communities create more density. Other areas, right?
Smart, so then you're doing both. What you think.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think, I mean, again, I think we have to have, you know, we've got to do. Our design work and figure out what those parameters are in terms of height and density, which is gonna be the drivers and then figure out how it fits into your process.
So by, so I would think then by May fifteenth. You know, in advance, you wanna have, you know, municipal law firm. Hear it up. And so on, May fifteenth, you can give them some sketches. And potentially, potentially work that process to begin preparing some zoning. That would come to us, you know, for review, consideration, discussion into June, the end of June. And then uh in July, further public comment, we go through the hearing process, you know. Uh we'd be in time for October of twenty twenty three. For some perhaps initial thing, there is a dovetail for sure, it's not.
Yeah, I don't.
Sure, it's not perfect, but I think that there, you know, that's that would, that would have, you have to line up your timeline. That way.
Precisely.
Correct.
Precise.
Very interesting approach that Jean summarized, if I understand correctly. Do you need a zone, do you need a zone? Forgive me, I don't have a. Any experience with a friendly forty B process. Um do you, you don't need the underlying zoning change.
For the forty B.
For the friendly forty B because it's a, it's like a Dover.
However, there is no reason why you can't uh in parallel fold in and ratify. Uh forty friendly forty B approval basis. The zoning that was approved by the.
Right.
So need appeals.
And then some of the project, part of the project. Maybe reconstructed under friendly forty B.
Correct, in the balance.
And then you'd be able to.
Properly for your face.
Yeah.
That. We're targeting May of twenty twenty four for our broader housing reform. And, you know, it's possible that that may bleed in, it may not work and we have to come back in October twenty twenty four. But uh so as long as you're aware of that, as some outside outside dates. You know, but in the meantime, I think we've laid out here a pretty good roadmap.
Yeah.
But but I think there was a question that was raised. That this goes to, I think, what Jean was saying. As to whether the A one district. Fits into their plan, fits into what they want to do, so that all that we may need to do is. I- is just do a map change to make this area. An A one district where we already have an A one zone.
It may.
Place in our bylaws.
It may, and of course, the wetland area is included in the acreage, so we just have about eighteen units per acre. Though that wetland is included in the acreage, it may work. Um it certainly would be the easiest approach, it it allows. Three-story buildings, you know, um and the in this, it's right in our zoning what they setbacks are in the different rules.
I guess a hundred and forty-four units.
Yeah, less than what we have on site right now.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, you 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 just calculated, and I had done that at one point, you know, it looks like.
Yeah, it it would be great if it was, I I don't know, thirty units or something like that. Um you know, because you know, two forty is kind of in that middle range, but at eighteen, I think, you know, we don't even meet what we have.
But that doesn't mean we can't have an apartment, a A three, you know, probably you got an apartment A two and that's. Apartment A three.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I suggest, I've been listening, we've all scribbling notes and um I think this is a germ of a really good idea here. Um I like to write things down, I'm wondering if whether a takeaway here is for us to. Take all this input and try to write it down on sort of a strategy. You know, that sort of addresses all these different moving parts. Um and you know, on our side, on, you know, the planning board side, taking into account these um. Comments that you have a lot on your plate, probably more than everybody realizes to get from here to town meeting twenty twenty four. Um and then see if we can have, you know, take a look at it again, and we'll send, maybe we can work offline with staff, the Alex. And see if we can get something that fits the overall situation. Um it's the one thing that Margaret said is very, the word's very tight. And when you say the word's very tight in the schedule and trying to get anything done.
And precise.
And precise. Uh and you don't have any buffer for things going wrong or, you know, then you, I don't think you have a good plan, we have a good plan.
I understand that generally sounds like a good roadmap, but I don't think Jean was finished or calm, I'm very sorry.
Part of the strategy, um um I think you mentioned this, that they they should have a municipal attorney on the team. Um uh rip who understands both housing, of housing authority law. And uh process and um municipal law and um and particularly zoning. Um I want to suggest that that attorney should research. Go back into the town's records and figure out how this um how the development got built in the first place. The building inspector's records, building commissioner office records, the the zoning office records. Uh there must be records going back to the time these buildings were built. And it may be that this uh buildings were considered a state project and therefore exempt from local zoning. And if that is the case, um there are certain rights that arise from that, and I think it would be very. Helpful to you to to research that that, uh go right back to the beginning. Um. Um and then I also want to suggest, because I have um gained a great deal of knowledge of your projects and your. Intentions from being on the Community Preservation Committee of whether and presentations made. I I'd like my colleagues to be able to understand the new ownership structure. That was explained very well to the Community Preservation Committee. Um and if the 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 reason you need to change the ownership structure to avail yourself to certain types of housing. And what the future is for the ownership structure.
Sure, so a a key funding tool for the redevelopment effort at London Chambers is the Long Income Housing Tax Credit Program. Where you um bring in um private funding, you typically, it's a a bank or an insurance company. That has a tax liability that it wants to um um alleviate through uh tax credit program. So if they make an investment in affordable housing, then the federal government or the state government gives them. A tax credit. Um but for them to take advantage of the tax credit, they actually need to be part of the ownership entity. And so what housing authorities have been doing is that they ground lease the property to a new limited liability corporation that is ninety-nine. Point ninety-nine percent owned by the investor member, the equity provider, so they get the economic tax benefit. Of the um investment, um and then the zero point one percent is the managing member, which usually is affiliate or the housing authority. But the housing authority keeps ownership of the land and then plays, you know, the point oh one percent. Member of the ownership entity, but becomes the managing member of that ownership entity, so that. Um it's still making the day-to-day decisions on behalf of the um what I call the owner, the tax credit investor, um ownership entity. The tax credit investor is in to get the the benefits of the tax um credit, um and they don't want to have. Headaches, they want a a solid project that's well-built, well-constructed, they tend to be in between ten and fifteen years, that's. Um when the credit delivery um period is, and then after that period. The um operating agreement that the housing authority and the investor. Um enter into um tucks to what the disposition process is and. Um our goal always is to have that disposition result with the return of the of the property to. A hundred percent control of the housing authority at.
Because it's amort, because it's depreciated.
Yeah.
Their tax was depreciated number a certain.
Yeah, right.
And so are they getting, are they getting it, they're like, they're getting a paper benefit. Not a cash benefit.
They, it's it's off of their tax return and they benefit not only from the tax credit um that they provide. So you know, we'll go out to the investment community and say, all right, we have, you know, ten million dollars of tax credits. What will you give us for that? In the pricing, you know, sometimes goes above a dollar. Right now, it's not, it's because of the high interest rates, the pricing is down in the. High eighties, um low nineties, so you get, you, the investor will say ninety cents on the on a dollar. So immediately they get that ten percent cushion, the other piece that they get because they're in the ownership entity. Structure is they actually get depreciation of the property. So during the time that they own, you know, the housing authority will have made, you know, and together made, you know, a a fifty million dollar investment. That will be depreciated over the thirty, a thirty-year term, and so every year they'd get one thirtieth of that, and so that's another benefit for them. So their rate of return can anywhere be, you know, between five to seven percent.
So e- even if they haven't put any of their money into it, they're getting.
They give you, I mean, they give you money, I mean, they'll give you the.
They're putting money.
They're putting money in.
How much money they're putting in?
Well, you know, they would give you ninety cents for every dollar of tax credit, so if you give them ten million dollars of tax credits, they'll give you nine million dollars.
Well, that's just related to tax breaks.
Right. That's, but that's, they're giving that upfront, yeah. Yeah, and they're getting that that nine million or that ten million dollars back over. Over ten years, in fact, you're probably getting fifteen million dollars of economic benefit back over that ten-year period. Depreciation, but the key, you know, for, you know, housing authority. Is to make sure that the deal is structured so that, again, it comes back to the housing authority at a nominal price.
Isn't the, isn't the. Depreciation for the structure and not for the dirt?
Yeah, it's just related to the.
You know, we're talking nine million dollar investment, nine million dollars is being used to build the buildings.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, so that's where the depreciation comes in.
Yeah.
Right, 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 that's right, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, well, I I just want to make clear, to understand the new ownership structure. And that and that may affect also rights under zoning, you know, if if the original development was allowed because it was considered a state project. Well, this is private property, so that's different, but there may still be some rights that arise from the original development. Look, maybe they would suggest a prior non-conforming, is it, is it not? I think they're a legal issue, and then even.
About something, he was saying that it's a ground lease.
Yeah.
So who owns the land?
The housing authority will own the land, I don't like to ever give that up.
Okay.
That's like.
Housing authority owns the land and this new LLC is the ground lessy.
Right.
The ground lessy builds the building.
Correct.
And then at the end of the ten or fifteen years, the ownership of the LLC reverts back to the housing.
Yeah, yeah.
How does that factor in as far as if an LLC is owning the essentially buildings? How does that factor into getting state money? Is it still, this is still a low-income housing project?
Yes, right, the 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 reason why the federal government or the state government makes tax credits available is that you have to. You are have to commit to providing the housing as affordable housing, so, which is. Uh what we're doing, so it's, you know, consistent to our mission, um and it's just a a way to, you know, bring a resource.
So this, this isn't, this isn't just affordable housing, this is deeply affordable housing.
That's the difference between, you know, a lot of low-income housing tax credit properties. Don't do deeply affordable because they don't have a subsidy, so a a one-bedroom tax credit unit. Without a subsidy would cost, uh the rent would be fifteen hundred dollars a month approximately. And the average rent at London Chambers is somewhere under four hundred dollars a month. And so it's the subsidy that we get from the state.
Yeah.
For state public housing or through federal government, federal public housing, that pays the difference from what the resident can afford based on thirty percent of their income. And what, what it actually costs to operate with the tax credit apartment without the subsidy, you have to find. You know, that sliver of elder who fits the income requirement but can still afford a fifteen hundred dollar. Um per unit, per month.
Combination of the tax credit program and the expected continued subsidies.
Right.
I want to, if I may, before I forget.
Um height, I mean, excuse me. Um I was gonna ask what your anticipated height of the buildings is, but I think it's premature to ask that. Um but I I did understand from a conversation I had with Reg that. Um you have done studies of the of the demand for parking at your facilities in this town. Um and that the demand for parking is much less than you would expect, for example, our apartment A one requires one and a half parking spaces per unit. Um we may be talking about reducing that for transit oriented developments to one space uh per unit. But your requirement is even less than that, I wonder if somebody would like to speak to that.
I I I can speak to that, I I think in the uh properties that we've been working with, like Cambridge Housing and Metford Housing Authority. These are zero point five for elders because of the demographics and currently.
Half a space per unit.
That's correct, and and this actually has been backed up currently, we have and uh. Was the need of housing in London Chambers, how many are car owners, I think we found that they're averaging about zero point four. At the moment, uh was the number, there's hundred and four parking spaces at London Chambers at the moment.
And I, I just thought we should have mentioned that.
And so and and this is consistent in what we have seen, particularly also in terms of only with other ones, Mr. Palace, Cambridge, Metford, Boston.
Steve, yourself in Norwood, right? You you've seen the same phenomenon in Norwood.
Well, in Norwood, kind of flipped it a little bit, we had to add parking spaces, but um. Yeah, and you know, and and Cambridge is a transit-oriented city. Um. Need them right now would be maybe a point four, but remember, we're marketing. Four hundred square foot units, we're not attracting the upper levels of the affordable of the income limits because they have other options. Uh so I wouldn't want to go to half a space, but somewhere in between the half and one, I think we'd be more realistic.
And then you, I mean, then you balance, you know, the open space issues with the parking and. And all of those things, so those will be the the challenges that, you know, as we progress on design. Um we'll be carefully considering.
That'd be interesting, if there is a, if, you know, if you can reduce the parking required. You know, it becomes a greater energy efficiency and so on and. You know, uh trans, you know, proximity to transportation, although I recognize that there are some, you know, residents of great disabilities, so that's. You know, there are different factors there and different needs, like you said at the outset, but. You know, that uh I would certainly support. The ability to access more housing units and more square footage to help more people. The ability to access more housing units and more square footage to help more people with less parking. Um, I, before I, uh, before we move on, I don't want to forget, Leah, I'd like to give you uh, two tasks. And Alex, if I can, one, I'd like you to add this to our overall schedule for planning purposes. For the next, uh, for twenty twenty-three, the schedule that we've just talked about. And secondarily, Gene, uh, Gene raised a very interesting question. And I want to make sure that we have that, we keep that on our, uh, if you can talk to town council about it. As we're advancing our zoning, because I don't know to what extent that ownership structure that you're talking about, that may or impact. Some of our own planning purposes. I just don't want to forget Gene's question. Um, unless anyone else has anything?
No, I appreciate it. So just a couple of things. So you're talking about fitting, you know, fittings in the neighborhood. Obviously, we want to maximize what's happening, whatever we can do with the amount of housing we're going on here. Now, are these, are these being perceived as a, like a three-story flat roof apartment style situation? Or is there any, is there any concept of what they might be?
I, I think they're two and a half or three stories. They're probably not going to be a, a flat roof. There may be a combination of pitches. There are precedents in this neighborhood that I think if we're speaking style. I think there's, there are precedents and plenty around in this area.
And it would be multiple units doing together with like an ins- inside hallway. So you have an elevator going up?
That, that is correct.
Okay. Um, the other thing is, so, so you're talking about the neighborhood. There's a fairly large tree buffer between the current. Situation and the Maple Street, I forget the street next to it. So the plan, I take it the plan is to try to leave that alone.
That, that is correct because part of that is, was, was in the twenty-five feet, no, uh, the, the lover zone of the, the weather.
And then the other thing is, um, I, I'm sure, I'm sure you're, 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 you know, the concept of like the community geothermal. I mean, there's a pilot project in Framingham that ever source. I think it's ever source.
Yeah, and the Framingham.
So like some type of geothermal community, community geothermal system. Now, obviously, if you have fairly large buildings. It won't necessarily be a geothermal for multiple of those buildings. But geothermal, geothermal is a high, is a lower energy cost over time than the S O C. It's just, it, it is.
And, and, and the, the, the con side of, of that system is, is expensive by, by magnitude.
Yes, it, it, it is. Well, it depends on where the tax credits and if there's any rebates, you know, from a homeowner. This tax credits, this rebates, I just don't know from in this situation.
On the scale.
Yeah, and obviously there's more tax credits that could be had by the investor. I just don't know if there's anything else that you had, but it, it is much lower in operating costs.
Absolutely. And their, their utility companies such as Eversource that will provide significant incentives such as forty-five, forty-five hundred dollars for a ton. For, for grounds where she pumps versus eight hundred dollars per ton for air source.
Yeah, big difference. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming in and. Uh, I appreciate you bringing this up and flying this for me earlier and glad we're able to meet you. And uh, um, to understand your plan and, and we're here now.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your support, really. Uh, and your willingness to be flexible and we'll figure out how to get, get this.
Keep the conversation going.
Thank you very much. Story is always open, right? Um, the next item on our agenda is, uh, uh, the appointment of a planning board member to the local historical district committee.
I, well, I guess what we should ask are any members of the planning board uh, interested in being recommended to this committee?
I'll put my hand up.
All right.
Nominated Adam Block. Let's take him about before it changes.
Nomination in the second that uh, might be recommended. I think you're saying, and the actual appointment must be done by the um, select board, but uh, we are unanimously.
Really? That's how it works? I suppose it's you. The select board is making more or less.
We don't get.
Well, the select board has an honest.
Board and they say, no, we don't like him.
So we don't send them anyone else ever, even if this.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, will come to the vote. Uh, uh, Paul Alpert.
I.
Artie Crocker.
I.
Uh, Natasha Spata.
Hi.
Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Uh, the chair votes aye. The chair is allowed.
Yeah, I have a question about procedure, probably, but we, now that we're past COVID. And we're not really on Zoom, do we need to have these voice votes all the time or can we just have?
Not our heads.
Well, you know, all, all in favor and, you know, we all say aye.
Right.
Because it was a requirement of the.
Beforehand, that's all you did is.
Yeah.
All in favor, aye, and. Yeah.
Right, because we're all here in the room.
Uh, we can check with, uh, to be.
One question in general because of that. Um, well, did we finish that or did we?
Yes, yeah, items to dispose of.
Um, one question is I think that, that the Zoom is only until April, right? Is the town?
No, well, March fifteenth.
To be, just to be clear, we'll always have a hybrid model. So members of the public can participate remotely, whoever.
The state law expires March fifteenth, but they amended the state law to allow municipalities. To have their own hybrid type of system. And our select board has put together a hybrid system that we can operate for. Going beyond March fifteenth.
Have solely Zoom meetings beyond March.
Thirty-first. And, and to be, and that policy, I think, means that um. Members really can't, members, it's not designed to give the flexibility members. The select board wants all members all the time in person at the meeting. You can really, you have to ask the chair. You know, uh, you know, and I'm good with quest bars. Um, in order to get, you know, it's really at the chair's, you know, discretion based on some, you know, I think a, a medical scenario.
They can be geographic distance. And I think there is flexibility that, that's helpful when the first is on vacation. You can zoom in instead of, and it's.
Only, uh.
Uh, there's a certain percentage of, of meetings that you can't skip. I forgot what the percentage is. But it's a generous percentage that covers the moment town most people take a vacation.
Will I be taking notes? Checking the schedule?
Just to make sure, just because if you have family members that are sick and you don't want to get other people sick and things like that. But then if, if all of a sudden you exceed it because you're either, you know.
Vacation.
Or, or you're in business.
It was something in a package recently, wasn't it?
Yes, I, I, I include, I think we included the select board's policy back in, in a package for you. Because of the fact that the state uh, law was going to expire at the, at the end of March. Um, and that said, you know, there is some, there is talk about some changes, further changes of the state law. So stay tuned. Um, things are evolving here.
I'd like to now move to the next item on our agenda, which is the minutes for December five.
Yeah, here it is.
There were some, I, there it is. In our minutes for December five, uh, Gene did again another thorough job. Um. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, I think there was, uh. Um, one yellow section. In the case I didn't say it for the record, this is uh, the meeting of December five.
Yes, in the minutes of December five, I had certain redlining.
Yes.
Um, and there was only uh, one thing that I was uncertain. Um, um, under planning board review and comments of draft affordable housing plan on page five. And there's a sentence at the end of the first paragraph. Smaller, they're, they're talking about, this is talking about ADUs. Um, um, ADUs generally do not cause a lot of change in capacity. Other developments are based on a specific development. Smaller units could be, and I added occupied by the elderly or singles. And, and, and the wording was, and it is project-based.
I.
And I wasn't sure what that meant. It is project-based. I thought perhaps what was being referred to is site plan review is project-based. Because that's the concept that you do the zoning, but it's allowed by, right? But you do have site plan review that is project-based. So if everybody agrees that that was what was.
That's where I was gonna go.
Okay, or just make that point, should, site plan review is project-based. And all the other changes were not substantive.
Thank you. Uh, can I have a motion to accept the minutes of the, uh, of the December five meeting as revised previously by Gene and further revised this evening?
So moved.
We have a motion by Paul, seconded by Natasha. Any discussion hearing now, welcome to vote, Paul Alpert.
I.
Uh, Artie Crocker, Natasha Spata, Jean McKnight, uh, motion carries, uh, the minutes. Asked the items to stand split. And um, now comes a report from um. Uh, Lee and other planning board members.
Uh, sure. Just so everybody is aware of some things that are um, in the future on the calendar. Um, uh, March sixth, which is um, next week, Monday. Um, the Affordable Housing Trust is going to be meeting, um, and Gene and Natasha will be accompanied, Karen and I to that meeting. Um, one of the key things on their agenda is to talk about um, what an expanded role the Affordable Housing Trust might look like. In conjunction with the recommendations that came out of the housing plan. So that's on the calendar uh, for uh, next Monday. Um, I think on April the fifth, um, the finance committee has invited um, the chair and the vice chair to do a presentation. On the zoning for town meeting, um, and a similar invitation has been issued by the select board for April twelfth. And both, um, Adam, Gene and I will be attending the finance committee um, on the fifth of April and, and the select board on the, on the twelfth.
Yeah, on that, just before we move on from that date and that item.
Sure.
Income typically looks for a um, uh, fiscal impact analysis. When we are making some, when we're making zoning changes. Is there someone that I could talk to, uh, is it John Conley, is their current chair?
You could speak with him, although I don't think they're looking for a fiscal impact study for an im- in, in implementation of accessory apartments. Um, that's not something that they would normally ask for such an analysis. And I, and I really don't know what it would show. Um, at the time, we did the first accessory apartment by law, we did not provide a fiscal impact analysis on accessory apartments. I mean, their fiscal impact, they're generally single units occupied by a single person. Not, not putting ser-, not, not putting service demands on the school system. Um, and so maybe the only impact would be an extra occupant in a house. So I don't, I don't think that they're looking for it. But John Conley would be the person you, you, you might want to speak with.
Want to uh, check with Louise first? Is that a?
You, you could check with Louise, but um, I don't, I really don't know what the fiscal impact analysis would even do. In the context of an accessory dwelling.
Okay. All right. Uh, sorry, you can continue. Thank you, Lee.
Okay, so that's, that's on the, that's on the plate. And also I'm working um. Uh, to put together um, a um, scope of work to hire consultants to assist us in doing the implementation. Under the MBTA's Communities Act to involve specifically, I think, the development of um, some. Re- drawings that would actually represent the rezoning. So actually assist us in actually doing some of the build-out analysis, the fiscal impact analysis. And the development of um, drawings that would actually show what the scale will look like as the plan is implemented. And some pro, and perhaps some, a couple of strategic sites that are kind of identified to actually do developments and pro formas on. So you can actually see how they actually are implemented. I've had a conversation with Judy Barrett, who's served the town, I think, she worked with us on a Muzzy site to see. Was, um, she might be interested in this work. She's currently working with eight other towns in a similar capacity. So I'll be working on a scope of work that I'll be sharing with the board to take a look at, because I want to get that moving forward. So that's um, the extent of my report.
Thank you. Alex, do you have anything?
Uh, the only thing I have, which isn't really a report, is that I would like us to decide on our next executive session.
Yeah.
Date and time.
So I think, Art, Artie, you were not really available from eleven, from eleven to twelve on Friday.
Well, that isn't necessarily the only time. It's just stated that to me at eleven. So I said, I could be free from eleven to twelve.
Yeah, but then, then there were a couple of emails. Jean can't make it at eleven. So we're talking about like one, one thirty-two.
Can that, I, I, so Friday, that's the third.
Yeah, I mean, you had suggested one thirty, but I really think I can be a one at one.
Okay.
Uh, or in the work we're meeting.
Um, that would be, that would be my high preference to do one o'clock. Is that possible for, uh, Artie, for you? I gotta, my wife, my wife's out of town and I, I'll be solo in childcare. I'll have to get my son in the afternoon.
I, I've already moved something to noon time from, from someone. I can't move that again. I can't move that again. It's probably going to go longer than a while.
Well, we can look into next year's.
I just, I can't move it again. One, the one thirty, uh, one thirty, I can, I can make, I can make one thirty.
Okay, yeah, right. Is that okay with you, Paul?
Yeah.
I'll tell Jim right now.
Yeah, please. Thanks a lot. Okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's uh, it's only quarter after nine. Go ahead, Robin.
The final item on our agenda is correspondence. Um, and other than uh, the correspondence that I mentioned previously. In connection with the two public hearings, we received the following additional piece of correspondence, uh, a letter dated February uh, sixteen. From attorney, from the attorney general's office approving our bylaw amendment passed at the October, Paul. October twenty-two special town meeting. This is regarding brew pubs and um, uh, uh, microbreweries. Um, encouraging the town to consult with town council on the application of the approved by-law change. To avoid running afoul of state statutes relating to alcohol, in particular, the ABCC's authority. Um, I thought that was an interesting letter. A memo dated February seventeenth to town boards from our town manager advising us. That uh, the state of authority to meet remotely is scheduled to end March thirty-one. And encouraging us to ensure that we have access available for members of the public. Uh, while generally requiring staff and board members to be physically present, except in special circumstances outlined in the select board policy with Jean. You have a copy of. And then, uh, then we have emails from Lindsay and Mike Wands at seventy-one Fair Oaks regarding eight eighty-eight Great Plains. And then we received two of butter notices from the town of Wellesley, one relating to public hearings. Uh, uh, both having occurred last Tuesday, February the twenty-first. Um. That's because the town itself isn't, isn't a butter to those projects. So. And yes, we're declaring it publicly. Um, you know, after the event, is there another way that we could do that? So that if other members of the public had an opportunity to provide comment. To us to give to Wellesley or to give directly to Wellesley. Should we post it on our?
Has that, if they send it to the planning board of the abutting town? We've never done anything other than share it with you. Um, but I, I don't think it's necessarily true that it's even butts the town.
No, it's, it's, it's a, it's a requirement of the zoning act. Basically, um, it's part of the process when you enact zoning. Needham does it itself. One of the requirements is that a copy of our zoning notice is sent to every community that abuts Needham. Um, as well as the state agency and the metropolitan area planning council. So that's part of the process that's required under forty-eight when you enact zoning. So we get notices from every abutting town of any zoning changes that are proposed there.
When we receive those, I wonder if we should post on our website. You know, additional public notices from other municipalities affecting Needham.
They're just, it's usually not even anything that we're. But, but, but we're really interested in, very rarely actually get one from another town like I look at.
We also are required to receive special permit, um, legal notices. And I don't share half of them with you because I don't think you care about going ten feet. You know, such and such way in Wellesley. So we do show you the ones that. We're, we're, um. We try not to take away anything that you could even vaguely be interested in. So you might see some that you're like, why do they think, but just, you know, because we don't want to make that choice, but. Um, you don't even see everything because there's that kind of.
Understood. All right, I just raise it, uh. Um. Uh, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, may I just say one thing came up just a little while ago, and that is, what is the rule? Um, just for missing a meeting in person and coming in by Zoom. Twenty, not more than twenty-five percent of the time.
I've taken all my vacation.
So I just could want to throw that out some.
Thank you very much for.
Might be our last meeting with Jay.
An exact exception.
Because we've been doing all of our meetings with Jay by Zoom. We're not going to be able to do that after, after the state law expires.
That's March thirty-one.
That's true.
But the month, but.
I don't know, is March thirty-one or is it March fifteen?
I, I saw it was March thirty-one.
Okay, but still.
Yeah, yeah, come on, whatever.
Go on beyond, beyond March thirty-one, so.
That's true. So I'll have to let him know, Lee, when we and Alex, when we are. Past that date, that all future meetings will have to be, which will be more difficult to schedule.
Yeah, it'll be. Can, can I just add, and I don't know if, if, um, Jean mentioned this already, but Jean and I were interviewed by the Needham channel. And, um, I haven't watched it yet. I'm a little afraid, but. Yeah, but anyway, I just. Yeah, you did. You emailed Alex and we can, so anyway, about the housing plan, so we're, um. We're glad that that's getting out there. Maybe we need to give it some PR, but in general, um.
I don't think we said anything.
Okay. It was good. Okay.
The advice of council, I hope we adjourn.
Yeah.
Second, so adjourn, uh, so moved, so seconded an discussion hearing then, Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Eddie Crocker, Natasha Spata, Jean McKnight.
Hi.
The chair votes aye. This meeting is, uh, adjourned. Thank you all very much.
So what's the strategy of, of the way we said, like, there's like two women, two men?